Call this meeting order, please. We're going to begin the... You don't have that until...
Oh, I am.
Not till... just before the media hits out.
Start with the state of our budget with their finance director, Mr. Butler.
Okay, I've got a three-page memo to you. I go through it word by word or any summary or any questions on it or just when I go through it? I have gone through it fast.
Do it how you want to do it.
Well, let's just go through it then. It won't take that long. Okay, the memo's purpose is to write the board supervisor with an overall view of the proposed Woodbury County budget for fiscal year 2020. As everybody knows, the economic environment is improving and the county's cash reserves are approaching the county financial policies. These will be challenging times. There are new factors involved in getting to the end result of a balanced budget. The county will get through this without major disruptions and services provided to the citizens of Woodbury County. Including the memo, our schedule is summarize the total budget by fund, total tax askings as they stand in the proposed budget, the tax funds that are out of balance, and the county's accrued cash reserves. As a board supervisor who has used this memo, I would place each category. The first one here is appropriations. Please remember that fiscal year 20 is only proposed at this point. Our total appropriated for 2019 is $54,631,678. The fiscal year 20 appropriations, as they stand now, and this includes improvement requests, CIP, everything, is $56,865,052. I have broken it down by fund, but the appropriations exceed the 19 current levels, and it's a total of $2,233,374. Now, this won't correlate to your tax asking increases because there's a lot of variables in the tax asking such as revenues, cash reserves, things like that. So, page two, the county has five tax levy funds. There are general basic, general supplemental, county services, debt service, and rural basic. In the following, I'll highlight some of the changes and we'll look at some of the expenditures over revenues. Now, when I say expenditures over revenues, that's what takes after we account for all of the new revenues, increases or decreases, has wages plugged in, everything's plugged in. In the general basic fund, we exceed by $1,888,852. General sup, $283,125. County services, $739,730. We are down in debt service, $811,343. In rural basic, we're up $340,429. So, we're starting with a goal of tax askings by fund, as you can see listed, of $2,440,793. This is about the same we start out with every year, but this reflects everything. If you approved the budget today, this is what we'd have to do, is raise taxes by that dollar amount, or revenues. And the following here shows... the next paragraph shows the potential new revenues we have from new taxable valuations. Our countywide valuations went up $104,468,722 countywide, and the rural went up $42,808,476. So, when I break it down by the current tax rate, if we left the tax rates the same, this is what we could generate in each fund without raising the tax rate. General basic was $386,000, general supplemental is $277,000, county services $55,000, debt service $40,000, and rural basic is $96,000. So, new revenue, we have a potential of $855,408. The new revenues are coming from a slight increase in TIPS, change in rollbacks, new construction, and CF valuations starting to come online. After reviewing the overall summary, I will now highlight the major fund revenues and expenditures. Here are the highlights for the general basic fund. First, the transfer in for employee benefits is going to be up about $75,014 because increase in hipers or some other increases. We have different changes in the health and health benefits of... actual health insurance premiums are not going up, but you have people going from single to family, family, single, and that's why we have a little increase there. Tax revenues will increase in this fund as the county must maintain a 350 tax rate which is maximum allowed by law. The maximum rate has been extended or has been exceeded according to state law through the use of additional public hearing. Currently, the county is at a $3.69591 rate. To use a general supplemental fund, the maximum general basic fund levy has to be 350 or higher. The third item that's affecting us is federal prisoner and building of prisoners is down $140,000, and interest received by the county treasurer has increased about $130,000 because additional new rates are keep going up a little bit, and appears they might keep going up a little bit more off and on. There was a point in time where it was down a half of 1%, now it's up to about 2, one and a half to 2%. So, that does help us. Expanders in the sheriff's department, there's an overall increase of $882,884, which includes two improvement requests for $320,719. We'll get more detail on those as we go through the budgets. Conservation divisions have an increase of $322,192. The improvement requests are including the overall increase in the amount of $153,000. There's a zero increase for the county health insurance costs. The past two budget fiscal years, there have been health insurance increases. So, it's nice that we're going to be at the same level for next fiscal year. Just some of the minor highlights in the general fund or general supplemental fund. Revenues for juvenile care has decreased by $150,000 because of fewer out-of-county juveniles housed at the detention facility. When we lose revenue like that, it does affect our tax asking because when we get additional revenue, it reduces it. So, that's a reduction there of $150,000. Increase in tax revenues, that could be $283,000 through new valuations. There are a whole lot of changes in general supplemental. The only change generally is we have general elections or general primaries. They vary each year. So, now, the rural basic fund tax asking for fiscal year 20 is up $340,429 due to the increase in taxable valuation and a minimum levy requirement of secondary roads, which is an additional $350,000. Unfortunately, when we have increases in the tax base, that increases your minimum levy. So, that's why there's pretty good size increase there. The debt service fund is projected to have a tax asking decrease of $811,343. This is a result of borrowing new debt for our fiscal year 19 projects and also paying off a capital loan note for the fiscal year 16 capital loan projects. This capital loan will be paid off nearly two years early. That will be due in this coming June when we make our principal payments. The county will have used 2.31% of our debt limit, which is 5% of the county's assessed valuations, or $350 million. So, we're pretty well, not too far in debt, pretty debt-free. We do have some, but not very much. The county services fund tax asking will be increased by $739,730 for fiscal year 2020. This number will fluctuate as Woodbury County will be moving to rolling hills region and receive a distribution of fund balances. That will reduce the levy by Woodbury County. At this time, we do not know. They've given us estimates. We've had three different estimates. The closest one I can come to myself is closer to what they've given on the low end, maybe a little bit more. We'll know more if we can adjust our county service levy up to May or June 15th. So, we'll have a lot better idea what our cash balances are. And Jeremy will have something down the road, you know, down the road, down this meeting, talking about the region. When all said and done, the board supervisor has to make some difficult decisions to balance the budget. There'll be... there will have to be potential expenditure reductions, use the same total tax rate to generate new revenues, and there will have to be a hard look at creating new revenues through the cooperation of all elected officials and department heads. The board supervisor will fulfill the responsibility of balancing a budget with the taxpayers in mind in order to provide the function and services to the citizens of Woodbury County through the most cost-effective and efficient way possible. Fiscal year 2020 should be a good year. We're planning on a lot of good things. So, that's kind of where we're at. You know, it always looks bleak at the beginning, but we always seem to turn it down toward the end. And I think the ultimate goal is basically try to keep the same tax rate or a little bit less. It's been accomplished for the last several years.
Sure. Thank you very much, Dennis. So, just a couple of questions. If you go back to the first page for a moment.
Mm-hmm.
So, on FY '20 appropriations for county services, mental health, you have $3,123,060. How did you come up with that figure? And are you looking at what is going to be totally appropriated or what the county is going to have to contribute?
Okay. We can answer that two phases. This current year, we were at $30,49, but we did reduce that back to $22,58, I believe. And the difference, we shifted to debt service so we wouldn't have this up and down, and the $31,23060 is based on $30.49 per capita.
Okay. So, two questions.
Yes.
Can you explain just because I know you've used a lot of numbers. We're talking through this whole memo, but can you explain as simply as you can why debt service and the county services levy are going to have an equalizing effect for the taxpayer?
Yes.
Does that make sense when you're showing a reduction in debt service and an increase in mental health services?
Right. The reason was, this current year, we wanted to levy the $30,49, so we wouldn't have this up and down. I call it yo-yo effect. So, but the region board up in Sioux Rivers decided we're all going to be equal, $22,58. So, instead of reducing our tax rate and having this up and down effect, we moved about $811,000 over to debt service to pay off the loan early, two years early. That way, our tax asking stayed basically the same and our tax rate stayed the same. So, this year, we can reduce our tax rate in debt service and tax asking because we're only going to ask for a minimal amount for our CIP projects. Then we move that money there, we save there, back over to debt service or to county services to balance this out. So, we are going up and down. We're staying stable going across.
And then my follow-on, thank you very much. My follow-on for that is on the FY '20 appropriations, when you put $3,123,060, you're looking at, at that time at least, you're looking at the total amount that the county services budget could be, correct?
Right.
But not the amount that would have to be contributed by the county because we're taking a portion from our reserves from Sioux Rivers. Is that right?
Correct.
So, when you add all these up, it may not... it may not come to $2,233,374?
No.
Because we may not have to contribute that much? Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. When they say per capita, they're saying how much we need to be equal or going over to them. How we generate that is through tax askings and the distribution. Now, all county funds have to be at zero come June 30 of 2019 because that's what they're going to base everything off. So, all we can have is say 30% or 25%. That's all we can have in fund 720, and that includes our individual counties in the region. That'll happen in every region in the state of Iowa. They have to be down to 30% or 25 or 25 the way law sets, but there's going to be changes probably in the law. And we're being on the safe side, I believe, and Jeremy can explain that down, you know, a little later in the meeting here. But it's a safety factor before they're kind of budgeting 20% over here, 20% over here, but it's an aggregate amount. So, every county is going to have to burn their reserves down, which will cause somewhat of an up and down effect for the first year because 19 will be down, but when you get to... or fiscal year 20 will be down for all the regions, but when you come to fiscal year 21, it's going to bounce back up because we've had to burn up these reserves and get down to 30%. That's true in every region. Some regions is even worse. Some regions carrying 100%. So, we're really going to have an up and down effect.
And then my one other question was, you're talking that... the June 2019 primary is for the elections?
2020.
2020?
Yes.
Okay.
We had a primary in this year's budget or general election, and next year we'll have a primary. It kind of alters every year.
But that's the one you're saying is going to cost $186,000?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Dennis, you refer to accrued cash reserves in your memo. Does that figure in here? And if not, what do we have in our reserves as a percentage?
Okay, our main one, in general basic, we're running about 23.1%. And our other fund, general supplemental are the big one, we're running about 14%. So, when you add the two together, we have, oh, I think, right around 21, 22%. So, it is potential. It depends if we want to use cash reserves down the road as a last effort to keep the levy down or tax askings. It depends how far we want to take our reserves down. The only suggestion I have, if we use reserves, it'd be preferable if we use it for one-time things, not ongoing expenses because down the road, that does catch up.
Right.
Any other questions for Dennis?
Okay.
You'll be close in case we think of something, right?
I'll be sitting right here. You can actually reach me if you need, or hit me or throw something at me. But you have the gavel. I don't...
Any questions before we get started? Item four, budget review discussion for FY 2020. General Leaf, come on, administration, general basic.
Your budget book is alphabetical, elected officials first, department second, and then the page numbers. You go to the department, run to the page number.
Happy New Year, Jeremy.
Same for you.
So, I think my budget request is the same as it was last year. I know I did have a conversation with you. I know that there's been a request for a change in the reimbursement rates for what we pay for the funeral homes, but as far as I know, nothing has been agreed upon. So, at this time, our budget is just the same as last year.
I'll expand on that. We've been approached, or I've been approached... well, there's a couple of things, but on the funeral homes, I forget, and maybe you remember, $760, I think?
It's...
For the funeral and then there's...
It's $835 for the funeral, and then we pay the city opening and closing when it's... because the county has purchased spots in Logan Cemetery. So, the city employees perform that service when there's burial.
But of that $835, as I understand it, there's a certain amount that gets paid, and I don't remember where it goes to the coroner or some such. I don't remember the facts or exactly where all the money goes. But in a nutshell, it's a... it's a very small pittance that goes to the funeral homes, and they are operating at a serious loss from my... from what I'm understanding. I would like to advocate that we increase that from the $835 that it is today. At one point, one of the funeral homes mentioned that they thought it would be around, this is going from bad memory, I think $1425 to break even. So, therefore, on an average number of fiscal year eight, 08, we had nine. All the way up to FY 13, we had 20. FY 17, 21 and 20. I don't think it's fair to ask our private sector funeral homes to operate at a loss on these things when they have no control over how many they get.
To date, this year, in this year's fiscal year, we've had 11 so far. And I just... I did, if we were going to have 20 burials, which maybe we're untried, it's just very hard to say because the range is so great. But if we did and you said, well, I want to do a 30% bump for funeral homes, that would be roughly in the neighborhood of $1,100 that we would go to. That would be a 30% increase.
A 30% increase from the $835 to the $1,100?
Yeah. And I have heard different numbers thrown around. I hadn't heard the $1,400 something number, but it has not been increased since our agency has started to administer it. And so, I'm sure, like everything else, costs have gone up.
It's been around 20 years, as I understand it.
Do you have a recommendation of what that number ought to be? I mean, I'm appreciative of the chairman finding out that information from... but do you have any recommendation on what that ought?
Well, I used... I thought what's... I mean, not having any kind of an increase for a long time, I don't know what rates are for funeral homes. I mean, this is... this does not cover a minister, publication in the paper, or any things like that. It's just a very simple service that's provided. We have had a lot of ministers in town that have offered to come and do services if people would like something like that, and they will do that without charge. But we've never really had anybody... very few times have we had people take us up on that, and there's no cost to the funeral home when that does happen. So, I don't know what a fair number would be because I'm not in that business. I just thought, well, we're probably not able to double it. We're probably not able to give them 50% more. We are doing more. The last couple of years, we've done right around 18 to 22 burials, you know, and it looks like we're on track to do that again this year. So, it's what you guys feel that you could afford to increase it, really.
Just me talking, but I come from small business background. I don't... I don't know of too many small businesses that enjoy having their... having that many services that they have to perform at that much of a loss. So, I... as much... I mean, and to me, this is looking for input, but I think a 50% increase is not out of line.
And again, I don't really have a recommendation because I, you know, we administer the program on your behalf. If you want me to do research and see, you know, what do other counties pay or something like that, I'd be more than happy to do that. It's all over the board.
Well, it would be because you've got different overhead expenses on different companies, different areas, so...
Yeah. Well, and we were talking a little bit before the meeting. In some counties, they are paying for the opening and closing, which we do directly with the city, but in other places that, you know, sometimes the county provides that. I think what you get for that amount of money is different in every county, too, which makes it harder for us to try to compare with another county. So, it will... what I will say is, if we up the increase, it would be nice if my budget could be increased to what you think roughly that increase would be to cover it.
Comments?
I think it's maybe something to bring back at wrap-up, you know, when we get close to the end. I mean, $5,000 divided by 20 funerals, you're looking at, what, $250-ish per funeral, and you're up to $1,085. It's a... doesn't cover it all, but it's a...
No, and that's my point. I just... like I said, I advocate for this small business, and I understand that they're not in the business to lose money because they can't do it long. And granted, not every funeral that... or every service that they perform or... they're not all that cost, obviously, but the cost's got to be made up someplace and...
So, Jean, you said 30% increase would be $1,100?
Roughly, yeah.
Total? Is that right?
That...
$1,100 total?
Would be what the funeral home would get.
Right.
You know, now they get the $835.
Right.
30% would be, I think it's $1,085 if I get my math right.
Yes.
But, you know, is that adequate? I don't know. That really is up to you guys. I was just seeing, you know, I was looking at, well, what would that do to our budget for 20... 20 funerals? And again, that's all, you know, that's completely in your hands. Whatever you guys want to do is fine with me.
Do we just use one funeral home?
There are two budgets here, administration budget and assistance budget. She talking about...
There's two budgets. We're going to have to act on each one. We're on the second one, really, assistance.
Right. Yeah. The administration budget is the amount that the agents... the admin budget is the first one. That's the amount the agency receives for...
Well, I'll move to receive the admin button, budget.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Radick, second by Taylor, to receive the admin, administration budget. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass the five to zero.
Do you want that brought up? Do you think saying wrap-up then?
I'm just going to suggest that you've got to be consistent. If you're going to consider to put it in now and then add it in, it's when you remove it if you need to.
Okay.
That's what you get... that's what you had to keep previously for.
Right now stands there's no change in the funeral home costs.
Is that 3901 that we're talking about funeral services?
Yes.
So, your suggestion of 30% is exactly 5,000 if you multiply it by 20 funerals. So, that would be like...
But you're suggesting...
She's going by the budget amount.
Sure. So, basically, you'd take line 3901 funeral services from 14340 up to 19340.
At 50%?
Actually, it's a 14,500 to 19,500.
Well, you should have probably done the first one first, but we're doing this one.
We just...
You shouldn't have asked that one.
Yep.
Okay, on this one, you probably should increase it. If you plan on increasing it, do it now. Then if it comes down to the end, we have to cut it, you gotta come back and cut it.
Say, Jean, do we use several different funeral homes or do we use just one?
Primarily, it's just one.
Just one, okay.
Mostly, it's been two. And I'm not sure if that would change if it went to 50% or not.
Right now, we're 14,5, and I think somebody suggested 5,000 cover 25. That's if they have 20, and we never know.
And then, so if you were to increase it to the motion...
Increase it by 55, or 5,000 to 19,5, yes.
Okay. You need a motion for that?
That's about 30%.
We can move to receive it with that.
You can, yeah. You can do it separately by just increasing that line or just increasing the... or separately budget by the increased amount. Receive that budget.
If you're receiving all the budgets, there are also some should change later down the road.
So, the simplest way at this point, if there are no other discussions, is to receive the budget with an increase of that.
I do have a couple of questions before. On some of these, Jean, and I don't know how far into the budget we were when you put these books together, Dennis?
About December.
Okay, so five out of the 12 months?
Yeah. And I can give you updates, too, if you'd like.
Well, I'm just looking at like rent payment assistance. We're at $15,000 out of $68,000. I know that was exceeded in FY '18. Is there any room on any of these? Do you think, Jean, on rent or utilities or health services? Or is it you're looking at more like a five-year average? And you never know.
It is so hard to say because this funding is used as the funding of last resort. So, if there is any other grant or program in the community that will pay for that, then we don't use the general assistance funding. So, some years, we have barely touched any in rental assistance or utility assistance because we had other ways to pay for it.
Have you exceeded $25,000, do you know, in utilities before?
No, I don't believe so.
Are you com...
And the reason is because our agency operates the energy assistance program this time of year, and that's when most of the requests come. And then there's a supplemental program called ESIP, so we would always pay out of every other program before we use the county funding.
And what I'm wondering is if you would be comfortable going down from 30 to 25,000, given that it doesn't look in the last five years or maybe even in recent memory that you've exceeded that? So, as we add 5,000 in on funerals that we... because if we... last year, it looked like we were at 15,230, and I know the year before that, you were at about that 25, but...
It really varies.
Yeah, yeah.
It really varies year to year. You know, the thing that I've always been told that I really appreciate from all of you is if we did have more funerals or we did have expenditures, if there's a downturn in the economy, then I can come back if I... if we need to do something else.
Well, that would be my suggestion, is that we give Rob Peter to pay Paul and move to receive.
Because out of the two years before, we were over 25, one year, just barely.
Right, but I think before that, in perpetuity in the past, we haven't, so...
I don't go further back than that, so...
Right now, you're $754 spent, which is accurate on here.
I do think Barnabas would encourage us to pay Paul. Sorry.
Would you clarify your motion for him, please?
So, I would... I would move that we would give 5,000 less in 3410 utilities assistance from $30,000 to $25,000, while at the same time, increasing funeral services 3901 from $14,500 to $19,500.
Second it.
No, Mr. Ung seconded that already, if you're still with it.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass the five to zero. Thank you.
So I take it you moved to accept it that way?
I moved to receive it.
Second.
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Pass the five to zero. Um, Department of Human Services.
Good afternoon. My name's Matt Madsen, I work with Department of Human Services. We work with Dennis pretty closely on our budget. Probably, you folks know, it's in, I have a code that you support our office, the operation of our office, not the people, not the equipment, or not the computer equipment, I should say, so, support that like you do your offices, and we're grateful, number one, for that support. And in a minute, I have some handouts, and I can get, start going around, to describe what your work, the work that you guys do, or the support you give us, what that is, it's an amazing amount of money that we're able to bring in through the work of our staff. One more for you, Dennis, thank you. At any rate, so, we, our budget, you give us support, we're in the building 822, the transport building down the street, so we're grateful for that support. Our, our budget hasn't changed much. Really, it's, you guys through, you pay a lot of bills that aren't in this budget, utilities and so on, aren't reflected in here. But, we're asking for, we're, we're in a good position of being able to hire some more staff, we've been down staff-wise, we're adding a few more folks, so that's driving up some of our costs, a little bit of supplies, and so on, so that's, so the, the bottom line is, we're asking for 120,800, and it's up from 110 last year. So, and there's some of those, you know, where we haven't spent as much, all you, in, office supplies, for example, that's already started to kind of creep up, as we're just getting more people in, so, I don't know if you have any questions about any specific sat size on that side. We also have a revenue, I don't know if you want to discuss revenue as well. But, revenue, we're estimating, we'll have revenue of 260,000 dollars for FY20. And actually, that second, the handout that looks like, has a spreadsheet that says expenses versus, versus revenue, that kind of describes at the bottom in the small print there, I apologize for that, describes the sources of revenue, and probably, the, whatever you spend on us directly, like for office supplies, and phone, and that sort of things. Plus an indirect rate, the cost advisory services, you have a contract with cost advisory to capture some of the time that primarily the county attorney spends on our behalf, on juvenile filings and so on, and then building expenses that aren't in our budget, but you guys spend on us, and there's a amortizat- there's that, there's amortization schedule going for a boiler, for a chiller, some elevator work, those kind of things. They don't show up in the budget, anything you spend on us, we capture, we submit quarterly, and you get a check back, so this kind of shows over the last five years, what you spend on us directly versus what the checks that you get in. Now, I recognize this doesn't include, or pay tribute to, that you own a building, at least we occupy part of that building. There's other juvenile courts over there as well, but, so that's some expenses you get back, so that's, and you can see, you know, the, the revenue's been anywhere from 300, it's hovered around 300,000 annually. I estimate 260, because I don't know what the indirect rate is going to be for FY20 yet, we haven't received that figure. So that 260, most certainly will exceed that, but at this point, I can't put a different number on it until we know what that's gonna be. So that kind of lays out expenses versus revenue for that, so we're grateful for, you know, what you give us to run, run our office, we try to be really diligent working with Dennis to make sure that, you know, we don't, we get just what we need. We really didn't spend much this last year, but we follow the lead of the county, and when it's time to replace items like our copiers, for example, are in need of replacement, we'll probably do that in FY19. So that'll probably get us closer to that 110 that we had suggested, so. I don't know if you have any questions, and I forgot to introduce, we have our service area manager, Tom Borch, because some of you go to meetings with Tom, and some of you may know Shane Fritsch, and Shane supervises one of our units, so, and Dennis, we're hiring a new executive officer for up here. So Dick Kloster retired, but we're in the process of hiring a replacement, so Shane's kind of filling in, helping keep track of the budget here locally, too. So I don't know if you have questions, or.
So what's the bottom line for the county, if I'm reading that, we have one page in our budget books?
Oh, sir, I'm not sure what you have.
Yeah, so I'll just, uh.
All we have is your line items, if they have, that's all we ever put in there, this is new here.
Right, so is this, as far as the impact to the county?
That's rather, yes.
The 260,000, is that, are we anticipating that's the operational change in revenue, or this is budget neutral?
I explained on this sheet here, that spreadsheet.
Okay.
The only thing I recommend, or suggest, is we increase the revenue at least to cover the 120,800. They increased it by around 10,000. If you look at the revenue, it's averaging about anywhere from 311, 329, 354, 341, 300. This month, we got another 75,000, so half a year, we've got 157,000. So potentially, we could raise the revenue to 280,000, which would help us 20,000.
But isn't that what they're showing us, the 260?
Yes, raising that to 280.
You're saying 280?
For FY20, Dennis, you're talking?
Yes, consistently, it's, you know, been about the same every year, and like you say, we just got 75,000 in this last couple of days, so we're at 157 for half a year, so if you take 75,000, the low of the two, here, 300,000.
On average, if it's been 325,000? You sort of mentioned, yeah, you mentioned the rate reimbursement?
Right, there's, there's a, a big number in there, that's a big factor, that I don't know yet, and I won't know till September.
But would you anticipate, if the last three years have averaged 325, is there something on the horizon that you would anticipate that going down to 260?
It depends on, primarily on, in, in great part, on what the county, what kind of time the county attorney spends on juvenile court filings. So, the cost advisory service does a, actually, it's a couple of years behind, but, cost advisory looks at the work that they've done, you guys do on our behalf, and I can't say what that figure is. Frankly, I'm sure, you know, an increase of, just say 20,000, Dennis, was what you were thinking.
20 or 40, 40, put it on 300.
I was thinking more like 40, at the, if we haven't gone down below.
So do you want me to come file an amendment if I don't think we're gonna hit 300 a year from now?
Sure.
Is that, I'd be fair to you, yeah.
I just look at it as, if we haven't gone under 300 the last three years, you know, estimating low, and.
I see what you're saying, it looks like I'm bad at estimating revenue, but I'm always bad to the, to the side where I don't, don't feed you with numbers I don't think we can meet.
Sure.
So, I do this really with all the counties I work with, I try to undershoot that. You know, we could move that in a year from now, we'd probably have a good idea, you know, whether that would work. You know, we, we would probably know right now, two months, or two quarters worth of revenue, you know, a year from now. We could move that, I, I think we'll get there, but, just depends, you know, your indirect rate, historically, it's been as high as 191,000 dollars a quarter, and right now, you're sitting at about 158,000 a quarter. So it can vary as much as 30,000 a quarter, and you get about, oh, go ahead, Dennis.
40.
I, I agree, but that's through six months, sir?
That's through six months.
Okay, I feel comfortable at the.
It's, sure, it's, it's your budget, yeah, I just, I don't want to, I think a year from now, I'll be able to come and say, hey, we had two pretty good quarters, but we'll know that better a year from now.
I would move to receive at the 300,000.
Second.
I, I didn't hear that.
I'd move to receive at the 300,000. If we're, if we're on pace for 308, average of 325, I appreciate that you're being more conservative.
Yeah, I just don't want to give you guys a number that would be, being cautious.
Yep.
Page one, page two, what, what page?
Page one.
There's only one.
So instead of 260,000, you're going 300,000.
Right.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young. Any further questions?
In the other page, I handed out, sorry, you can invoke him.
Sure.
If you want to accept that, you know.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Pass five to zero. Thank you.
And the final page, with the, the numbers on the front, and the pie chart on the back, I mentioned the work that our income maintenance workers do, the folks who determine eligibility for benefits. That's just a quick thumbnail, I won't go through every piece of that, but it just shows how much our folks determine eligibility for, for these programs, and the largest on that front page is the food assistance, it's the SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Program. In the old days, called food stamps, so annually, almost 21 million dollars a year comes into Woodbury County, so it's 1.7 million per month comes into Woodbury. Family investment, the second one down, very small program, that was time limited, lifetime limit, it's only about 1.6 million. But then Medicaid, our folks determine eligibility for Medicaid, a lot of that comes into nursing homes and hospitals, but 216 million in Medicaid comes into Woodbury County annually, so our workers are, they determine eligibility, and then the payments are made by the payer, oftentimes the federal government. Back page just has some of that same information in the pie chart. Shows you how many folks in the county, what percentage of the population benefits from that, so. That's the work our workers do, it's kind of quiet behind the scenes.
So you're 28,578 eligible, and then 32,000 served, is that because the same person has served multiple times, is that correct?
The eligibles and.
Cause sir, what, sir, could you come up here, so, so everybody can hear on the microphone and such?
The eligibles are the ones who are eligible that month, the served are the ones that are paid that month. So, sometimes those payments, I'm told, don't always match with that. But, with that 28,000, about one out of four individuals in Woodbury County that are receiving Medicaid, which is operated by the department with significant funding from the federal government also. So yeah, as Matt said, we do appreciate the support Woodbury's given us over the years, and looking forward to that in the future.
Thank you.
Dennis, the 300,000 figure, what was that now?
That is revenue.
Revenue.
That is revenue.
Releasing the indirect cost reimbursement by 40,000 up to 300.
So that was a revenue budget, it's not the expenditure?
No, revenue.
Okay.
Revenue, yes. Now they're on expenditure on page two.
What's page two?
That's just their administration.
I think it's all on the same page, right?
Nope, next page.
Oh, it's the second page in the book.
There should be another page here.
You need to get it?
This one here.
Any other questions or comments, while we're.
Sure. Office equipment and furniture, is that, we're anticipating spending 15,000 next year?
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice, what the question was?
Uh, that's on 6360, it's the last four digits, office equipment and furniture, I saw that we spent 23 back in 17, then nothing in 18.
Right, right.
13 and 19.
And then so far, they've spent almost 18.
So I'm just wondering, are, are, we anticipating a true expensive 15?
Yeah, more people. I saw, fortunately, we're in a fortunate position to get some more staff, so I think I did, that's why I did increase that one.
Okay.
And then the other, the other increase was down to probably the final one, the office equipment and furniture, and I think.
Yeah, that's the one I'm referring to, yeah.
Oh, at the bottom, I'm sorry, 6360, yes. Probably the same answer, you know, we increase that request by 2,000, I think we're just, just getting more people, and equipment's been there a while, just keeping on some sort of replacement schedule. I'm not sure why that's zero in FY18, I'm not, that doesn't seem, doesn't quite make sense to me either, but, I find that a fair thing to say, but.
Any idea, Dennis, why it's zero?
Um, we zeroed out in the budget, and I looked at expenditures for 18, they did spend nothing, so, whatever, I didn't buy any equipment last year. You were the Utes County Fox.
You were extra frugal, I'm not sure.
You guys were, you didn't buy it.
No, we, yeah, we, again, we.
So far this year, you've spent 3,200 in that one.
Right.
You don't want your new people to stand?
You know, that's, no, not, not when they need to work. Some people, when they're out, out and about working, yeah, then the chair's the one you need to.
How many cell phones are we covering there?
You know, we did increase last year, we got smartphones for our staff, all our social, we have social workers who, some who do ongoing, long-term cases. In the past, we hadn't provided all of them with phones, but that was a direction we received statewide, we wanted those people to have office provided phones, in addition to the child abuse investigators, we'd always provided them with phones, we added, primarily as a safety feature.
How many, how many staff do you have?
It's our social staff, 25.
And then we have about, probably, then we have income maintenance staff as well, so, you know, we probably have, yeah, 80-plus people.
And you're adding about how many more right now? You said between this year and next?
You know, I think we're hope to get, we're getting around 10% more, folks, you know, just, and we were just, Tom and I were talking on, on the drive here, you know, that's our overall number of staff, we serve 30 counties in our Western Iowa service area, and we're still, when we've started this last round of restructuring, which now has been about nine years ago, we had about 270 people in our area, and now we're down to about 240, so we're hoping to, to get to a number that was, so that's driven by how many cases we have, primarily, we try to, as that need goes up, we try to serve more folks, but it's, there's an inverse relationship, we are busier when the economy is worse, and that's when we need more people, so, but we're often able to add when the economy's better. But sometimes cases go up as well, but it's, the, the number, it's kind of a squiggly line for need versus money.
Do you know where 6360 is right now, Dennis?
6360.
Do you anticipate in the rest of this fiscal year?
3,500, 3,295 dollars where we're at now, on a budget of 13,000.
Do you anticipate spending almost 10,000 in the next six months on?
We're gonna buy a couple of copiers, that's our intent.
Okay. And do you know what those will?
Uh, I don't, we haven't priced them, and we tend, did you still guys purchase your copiers here in Silver East?
Yep.
For the year, before we kind of follow.
6,800 apiece, they are cheap.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Young, second by Taylor, to receive budget. Any other questions? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Pass five to zero. Thank you. Uh, Board of Supervisors. Item one, Woodbury County Solid Waste, Real Basic.
Do you want me to sit here, or you want me to go up there?
You may sit, Dennis, if you have all your stuff there.
In this particular one, we do contracts with Yell Halling, and it's set up by commission. They meet quarterly, I believe, try to meet quarterly, and there's, all the towns are involved, so what they do, they take the population, divide it out, and get a contract cost. Our share, and 3% increase, which is in the contract, is 212,807. They do get 60,000 rent back into the landfill funds. There are separate funds, separate agency, all we do is levy against the township people. So it's really set by contractual. Now, a little loud, we can do it. That's on page 49 under the supplement. We were at 206, 609, we're going to 212, with the 3%.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig, to receive. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Pass five to zero. Miscellaneous refunds, page three.
On this one here, this is where we do refunds of taxes paid, possibly in air, overpayments, things like that. It also includes a tax rebate that we pay CF back. Where we made a 20-year agreement that we have to pay back our share of their excise tax on their pipeline that goes into the plant. Their pipeline's around 89 million assessed. Uh, we have to repay our share, that's our agreement we made when we did our agreement with CF. So that amount's 200, or 652,000 general basic, and then there will be one eventually out of Real Basic that we'll talk about a little bit. And then 20,000 worth of refund. 20,000, I do budget that as revenue coming in, because items we've received, we have to refund back, so 20,000 offset the 652 is included in our whole tax asking. But we have no choice. 652 is included in our total tax asking. But we have no choice.
I move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Taylor. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass five to zero. Item three, medical examiner.
They request to be moved to 15, two weeks, because they had, they were here, they had to leave. So request to move that to the 15th, I marked it down, we'll move it to the 15th. Here's the items we gotta talk about on NAS, the funeral homes. So I guess we'll just wait till the 15th on that one.
Okay.
If the board of sole desires.
I move to table.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Duett. To table medical examiner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass five to zero. Soil conservation.
Yeah, I don't see a page number there, but I can explain that real quick. I don't know if there's anybody here. I don't see anybody here for soil conservation. That's the individual we pay half their wages, and he goes out, maintains the dams out of rural area, water conservation. We've always paid half their costs. Their costs have gone from 36,000 to 39,000. So it's a 3,000 increase. We do pay that. I noted it here, we pay that out of, we budget it out of Real Basic, but we transfer money from local office sales tax to cover that.
Is this something required under law, or how's this work?
I do not believe it's required, no.
Is it a partnership with a different government agency?
Yeah, soil conservation.
That's another, okay, county level?
Extension, I believe. There, we called-- So if you want, you've heard that for a little bit, see if they do show up, have you find?
I'll move to table and give them another date.
Would you delay it further in the meeting if they do show up?
Oh, they'll be here yet today. Oh, okay.
Let me just skip over.
We have a little bit of time in, go from there. Actually, I can give you page number, though. I don't know why they aren't there, but they aren't. But it's page 50 through 53. They kind of give a breakdown of their budget, their expenses, things like that. And they do have a little letter there where they're making requests. So under supervisors, pages 50 to 53.
Okay.
Dennis, one question before you go on, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Your chair. So is that something that we can continue to pay from local option sales tax? I know it's not a very--
Yes.
High expense.
Yes.
Do you have that figured currently in our, everything else? Okay, thank you.
So now we're tabling. Tabling soil conservation for the moment. Item five, public bidder. Looks like pages 13 and 14.
This one here, they left the same expenses, $5,000. That's always somewhat of a, based on past history, but also not a property seller here. That's kind of just a, in a whole lot of money, but we do get money back on it. We budget 5,000 and usually get any sum of money, depends how the bidders go. We could get that all back in one sale.
Can we, do you think we could go from 4,000 to 3,000 on professional services?
Yeah.
And then is there any reason to have the 4410 buildings in the future, do you think? Or just, we could just eliminate that?
Yeah, we moved that building, so I will take that line. Anything that's got zeros that we find here, I will take out, so we don't have. Try to catch a lot of them, but we missed someone when we were doing the three main pages.
I'd move to receive less than 1,04201.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young. Any other questions?
We do have on page 14, if you want to look there, the revenue comes in. We estimate 15,000 past, we've got 20,000 already this year, 14,800 the previous year, the year of 1414. So if we take in more, we pay. So with public bidder, even though akin to all the taxpayers, the different entities, and once we get it, we sell it, it's our money. So we don't have to portion this out to all the taxing bodies. We keep getting a whole lot of money, but at least pays for the public bidder cost, plus.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't increase that a little bit? I mean, if this year--
We got 14,000 each year. This year, we've had a couple bids that went pretty high.
Inflated it artificially? Okay, okay.
Even in, it's been way less even in previous years before those, like this year.
Okay. I'd move to receive.
Second.
Didn't we have a motion?
Oh, that's right, we did.
Oh.
We had a motion for the first page.
Oh, I just went to another page, sir.
Revenues, you don't have to do anything with, because they aren't really corporations.
Okay, so we can just go on the motion we have.
Your motion, 1,000 decrease, received with a 1,000 dollar decrease, perfect.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Item six, mail services, page 15.
Next page, we left this the same, basically, because your expenses are running this, and also they are proposing, I think, a 5 cent increase, the 55 cents from 50 cents. Usually what they propose, they usually get. So 635 will cover us, it should cover us. Again, we don't control postage costs. So we're left the same.
I move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Duett, second by Reddick. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Item seven, district court operations, page 3031.
On this one here, basically, this is an in and out, except for the parking for the judges. We have gone to where we are paying, five parking places over at the car lot right beside us here, across the alley here. They're at 650 apiece. And I think that has a little bit of an increase in, not much, but for five judges for 3,250 bucks. And the 225, we budget that, it's income coming back in. The orders out, the bills out, you know, regular billing on a phone service, and then they get claims back, or reimbursement from the court system. So it's an in and out. And that in and out is shown on page 31, where we get reimbursement, it's the 22,000. So the real net cost to taxpayer is the car park.
I move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young, to receive. And that's what, no changes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Item eight, court-appointed juvenile attorneys, page 32.
That there, we do pay a base, basis, 239,000, a 3% increase, and then we do have extra costs for what isn't covered by the base. So that did go up, no, it didn't go up. Where it went up was the mental health attorney fees been ruled, we have to pay those. That's something new, and it's getting bigger and bigger all the time. So we went from 40,150. That 150 probably could be knocked down by, let me see where we're at right now. Because we're halfway through the year now, so. We are 38,000. So we could drop that. 70,000, that still leaves 80,000. Attorney fees, you never know where they're going, or how many juvenile cases we'll have to pay for.
You said there was an increase in the reimbursement rate?
No.
No?
No. Well, we actually pay, we pay a base on line item 4253, of 239,000. Then after that, we have to pay so much. They cover the first 239, then we have to pay a little bit. It hasn't been running too high over that lately. So that, we left the same at 245. The mental health attorney fees, 38,000 right now that we paid out, if you double that, 75, 76. If we leave 80 in there, we should have one else, we cut 70,000 out. On line item 4254.
And it looks like you just kind of bounced around that in the last two, 82 and 77.
Yes, we never know.
Yeah, but I mean--
We kind of argued against it, but our county attorneys ruled that we have to pay.
But so if you went with 80,000, you're pretty close to being right in there.
So I'd recommend 70,000 cut there.
I'd move to receive less than 70,000.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick. Any other adjustments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Item nine, risk management services, page 33.
This item here is a levy we do every year. We've always left with a million one. It was higher once about a time, a few years ago, at 1.4 million, but our cash is in there enough that we reduce to 1.1. This covers all of our legal actions, getting to county, all of our liability, any liability possibilities, insurance or claims, and workman's comp. So a million one hopefully will cover. I was gonna raise it, but we're gonna try it without it, and leave it at 1,001. Right now, we got about 800,000 of fund, but that can get eaten up pretty quick. So I'd recommend leaving a million one. If there's any big changes, we can always adjust before we're done with the budget cycle.
What's the cumulative balance, Dennis?
Right now, we're at around 800,000 in that liability fund. I've already moved the million one over for this current year. So we'll still have bills come out of claims or whatever out of that 800 or 900,000 till the end of June 30th. Then we'll replenish another million one. The goal will be eventually building up a little bit, but we're just kind of keeping it, we're at 200, 300, 400,000 up at the end of the year. Be nice to have a lot higher than that, but we just, I don't want tax form. And I would think you just don't want tax form.
I move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Duett, second by Reddick. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes five to zero. Item 10, board of supervisors expense. Page seven through nine.
This budget Karen and I put together, basically, helps a little bit with those two. And this whole board of supervisor expense actually only went up 11,000. Memberships, we listed all the memberships there. The audit went up a little bit, because we've had to have, you know, different things happen that we had to pay extra money. Eventually, hopefully, once we get converted to new Tyler software, we have one more cycle of what we have currently. But on the 20-year audit, that will be done a lot simpler and easier with the new Tyler software. So hopefully during the 2021 budget year, we can cut that expense down. Right now, it's at 48,900. Hopefully, we cut that down a little bit down the road, because it's cost us a little bit just to do the extra stuff. Extra duties they had to perform, put that way. But you look through the individual line, none of them really increased too much. Almost status quo all the way through.
What sort of things does office supplies take care of? Is that--
Usually older office supplies toward the end of the year. We always see how much is left in the budget, then go out and restock. And that'll be true in a lot of budgets, too.
And typing, printing, and binding, is that something that we're, I'm just looking at 88 dollars and 30 dollars and--
This one, we could reduce that probably a thousand dollars. The reason I'm saying that, we now have, instead of going through a local source to do the printing, finding, we actually have Williams Company do it, because they can do it cheaper and it's part of our own cost. So we have knocked a thousand off there, if you so desire. The reason our expenses are down last year, or we did not have anybody go on a Washington, DC trip this last cycle here, in fiscal year 18. In May of 18, nobody went. Now that could all change, you know, in, you know, May of 19, and maybe we want two or three go, who knows. But we leave the money in there just in case they do go, so we do have the funds available. That's why your travel's down, too.
Under the dues membership, I see the 20,438. But yet, on the breakdown, that just shows the amount for Hungry Canyons and doesn't include the others, is that?
This includes all the dues we pay out of, you got Sue on Chamber membership, US 24, it's all listed right there.
Okay. Oh, so it's Hungry Canyons, 3250, and I'm just not lining it up right? Okay.
Your big ones basically are ISAC, Semple, and Hungry Canyons, NACO, and Golden Hills. Yours are smaller, but they're all, you know, we've paid them for years.
What's Golden Hills again? Think I asked that last year?
I can't answer that one.
Is it that the Les Hills thing?
No, Hungry Canyon.
At the economic development website? Which one?
Golden Hills.
We have to look up the individual names, see what it is. We can highlight that if you want to come back to it, or if you want to approve it, either way.
The professional services, we're at nine, that's 4201 on the second page, we're at 914 out of 8,700 so far.
Yep. And the reason that did go down, that's where we pay our attorney fees out of, whenever we had attorneys in the old days. Now, whenever we have attorneys, we basically pay them out of liability fund generally, because it's always something to do with comp or lawsuit or anything like that. That's all paid out of our liability fund. So potentially, yes, this one could go down. I can give you a--
What would we still be paying out of there? I mean, I see the frames for employees who retire.
I can tell you what we paid out of there currently this year. Right now, we pay 1,419 dollars out of it. And the major costs, where Governor Fin, okay, that's where we pay our governor finance officers, GFOA for our CAF report and pilot, that's 505 dollars. Our retirement resolutions, those come out of that line item.
What's the cost allocation plan? 6,900 dollars?
Okay, that's where we contract with the firm every year that looks at our federal indirect reimbursements. They get X number of dollars. We have to pay them, then we get the rest of it.
You anticipate--
We have to come ahead of that.
We're going to be paying that again?
Yes. We have them every year. We've had them for multiple years.
Yes. Okay. So then you really can't reduce this 8,704, right?
Yes, I would leave that.
Okay.
But you're saying some of that professional services? Dennis?
Yes.
You said some of that professional services is actually paid out of the liability fund now?
Yeah, we used to pay some attorney fees when we had negotiations. Now that just comes right out of our liability fund.
So would that be the reason you went from 16,000 down to 8,704?
Yes.
But you're saying the eighty-seven oh four you have spoken for, right?
Yes, and that's listed through four different items there, yep.
Oh, I see, so that's the accumulation of the one down below it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
We try to break some of these lines down so you see what they're for.
What was the one that we said we could take a thousand off of? Was that forty twenty?
Or typing, printing, and.
Binding.
Forty twenty. Take a thousand.
On page seven.
On page seven, sorry.
I'd move to receive minus that, unless there's other.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. Any other?
Do you have a total, Dennis?
One thousand.
Just one thousand?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass is five to zero. Board administration.
That's really ten through twelve.
Ten through twelve.
Okay, on this one, on page ten, show you the farm income coming in. We just paid a certain dollar amount there. We already have that bid out. I don't know if we got any bids back yet. For the farm, county farm.
We don't have any for the county farm, but we have three for the Cratcheville site.
Okay. Cratcheville site won't be very big. County farm is, to rent out, a hundred and eighty or ninety acres, a hundred and ninety-nine acres, I think of them.
Two oh three.
Two oh three. But we haven't had any bids back.
What are we getting for rent this year?
This year, we're getting about seventy-three thousand. Seventy-three thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars approximately. We got the fir, they pay them in halves. First half, we got thirty-six thousand eight forty-five, so we're talking seventy-three six in that range.
Do you anticipate that going up as you do commodity prognostications?
Be the same or go down?
I think it's probably going to go down, I was going to guess. Land prices are going down some.
Yeah, depends what they do with their crops anyway.
I'd move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, to receive.
And that one, we can adjust once we get the bits and open them up and see where they're at. Then the other pages, eleven, twelve, is our office expense for the administration, of Karen, Heather, and myself. And that actually went up twenty-eight thousand. Ten thousand in health insurance. Some of the wages went up.
We've got a motion.
Big increase of publications, that went up nine thousand dollars.
The motion.
We don't have a vote on choice here because we got to publish our Legals in the Journal, Mobile, and Sergeant Bluff. So printing's been going up. You can see the past two years, it's gone up quite a bit. Fifty-eight thousand nine, fifty-seven four, so sixty thousand probably be pretty much in the line.
Where are you at right now, do you know?
Let me tell you here. It depends if all the bills are in, too. Currently, we're at twenty-two thousand two oh six. And that probably does not, I don't know if that includes December or not.
Which one are you on, Dennis?
Publications. That's for publishing in the Journal, Mobile.
Danbury Review.
Sergeant Bluff.
And you say that cost is going up?
No, we're just pushing sixty thousand, because we're right around fifty, fifty-nine thousand, and printing is getting even cheaper.
Can you go to fifty-eight? I mean, I'm just looking at three, your average is fifty-five, eight.
We don't have, if we need more, we'll just have to come back.
Where are you at right now for this year?
Right now, we are, when I say, uh, twenty-two two oh six, and that doesn't have December in yet. So we could probably go down to fifty-eight. Where are we, sixty? I say, if we got to have it, we got to publish it. If we can buy, that's great. But if this will affect tax asking, is everything reduced? And expenditures, everything increase in revenues, affects it both ways. Say help. So two thousand potentially there.
We need a new motion on that, Mr. Gill.
No. Well, yeah, you need to clarify, but I just want to make sure we're, um, there's one budget, then. Board administration, item eleven?
Yes, board administration.
But you just went on to a different page because they were, they made a motion previously, but we didn't vote on it.
For a thousand dollar reduction.
Yes, I already, I already have that one, right.
We're on board administration.
Board administration, okay.
We're talking two thousand dollars out in publications.
Right, but there was a motion made.
Say we have a motion.
Yeah, I think you made a motion on the first page.
Yeah, you have a motion made, but you're keeping a running total, and you're going to tell me that.
Yes.
Okay.
So we can just keep it all in the same motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we did last year.
Yep.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
What is it?
Wait.
What is it?
Two thousand dollars.
Just two thousand.
Two thousand publications.
Yeah, but just two thousand, reduce the budget by two thousand.
Two thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you.
All opposed? Pass five to zero. Item twelve, Sheriff Training Center, page forty-one through forty-four.
Okay, on this one, we are in. Included in here, the schedule. I thought I did. Yes, I did. Okay, seventy-four thousand three forty-four, we do use gaming revenues. First, we were using local op, we shifted all the gaming revenues, seventy-four thousand three forty-four, plus the donation the deputies made of forty thousand. We use each year, we prorate that over the five-year span. And any other monies we get in, we offset the cost. So our lease, you'll see on page forty-three, out cover payment seven, eight, nine, and ten of twenty payments. So after this year, we're halfway paid through it. After this next fiscal year, we're half paid on that. Payments are a hundred and thirteen thousand nine twenty-three. On page forty-four, I showed you how we come up with that hundred and thirteen thousand. Donations, we use eight thousand, that's forty thousand each year that the deputies donated. And then we use seventy-four thousand three forty-three eighty-eight. And then we had funds in there already to help offset this, so it makes the net of a hundred and thirteen thousand nine twenty-two. We, and the gaming is already programmed for this, so when we get the gaming, it's already taken out, so you'll see how much money you have left in gaming revenues. How to allocate some of that. But after this next fiscal year, we're half done with that already.
Isn't that going to be a ten-year deal, or was it, is it just five?
Five years. And then in the five years, I think, you get it for buck or whatever, comes off. It's a lease purchase.
I'll move to receive the Sheriff Training Center.
Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass is five to zero. Item D, county library, pages two through nine.
No, you got Starcom.
We got Starcom there.
We did what?
Starcom.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Starcom program, page twenty-nine.
And that one, right now, we've taken allocation out to Starcom. It's a multi-group of cities, counties. And on that one, we put in a not, that can change because their committee or commission is not met yet to settle. I had to put something to put a budget together. So I increased it a couple of times, around three percent increase, but it may change, you know, due to various other items that the commission decide for us.
Glenn said to be representing Starcom. Good afternoon. We, uh, actually, this is on the agenda for next Wednesday, Starcom Executive Board to have the budget approved. The major change that we're looking at is our jumbo equipment, which we, it's the network component that breaks out all the circuits. That was purchased four years ago. That came with a five-year warranty. That warranty ends July, this, actually, the beginning of this budget year that we're proposing. And the maintenance for that is fifty thousand a year. So that will be the major discussion of the, of the budget hearing through the Starcom board. But if, uh, if it's approved, uh, the county's portion of that approved budget would be sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. The, uh, the total, um, budget for expenditures is four hundred thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. We re, we bring in a hundred and four thousand nine thirty-five and change in revenue from basic tower space as such, but. But it's actually on the agenda for next Wednesday meeting for. So if it, if it doesn't get approved, uh, to increase that fifty thousand, it'll be what it is under the current budget here.
Is there a reason why this was put on for today when the commission hasn't met yet?
Kind of follow last year's schedule. I don't know when their commission's going to meet. We had that a couple of instances, county, we got another one coming up. Versity Management, same situation. We know what they're going to ask, it's just they officially have to prove it. That one I put in, I did not know the exact number on there because I did not know about the maintenance.
And that fifty thousand dollar number, I didn't get until the end of last week, so.
So I had that.
County companies are seeing it, and that's why it hasn't been sent out.
We have to defer this one to the fifteenth also.
Well, do you anticipate any hiccups, or do you think they're going to be fine?
I mean, I think we need to weigh, is it worth spending the fifty thousand dollars on a maintenance contract? Or do we put some money aside and buy spare parts, you know, equipment like that? That's, that needs to be a discussion with that board to see if we take a chance of, of just buying, having a spare parts inventory? And not worry about a maintenance contract, because some of that maintenance contract is, uh, you know, overnight delivery of, of, uh. Piece of hardware that might have failed. Our contractors, Calvin Communications, so some of that's going to be asked by them because they're the ones, they're our service provider. But we've done that in the past with some equipment. We take a gamble, basically, we roll on the dice, do we, do we put, not spend the fifty thousand, and we buy more spare parts so they have them on hand? And then, and it's a time, time immaterial, um, for maintenance, so.
Worst-case scenario, the number I have in the budget book to what he's had, if they do accept the fifty thousand dollar yield, will be an increase of about forty, about forty-seven hundred over what I have in the book. But if they don't do it, it could be about thirty, I think our share of the fifty is thirty percent. So you're talking fifteen thousand reduction.
The county's share of the whole budget's twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three. So fifty thousand, ten thousand dollars, it could go down. Unless they buy parts.
The, 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 the membership of the board is Dakota County, Union County, North Sioux, LeBri County, Sussex City, and Sergeant Bluff, so. It has to be approved by, by those governing bodies.
So the next Starcom meeting is what?
Next Wednesday.
The ninth, yeah. And that's at nine?
Yes.
Okay.
It's nine or ten, I think.
Well, I got nine, but I just wanted.
So can we defer this, I suppose, till the fifteenth? Because then they'll have the meeting on Wednesday, we'll write numbers.
And we just accept basically what they recommend or what they pass? No, I understand that, but.
Oh, yes, yes. I think we have a member on the Starcom, I believe, somebody.
Actually, I'm sure Rocky's talking here.
Move to defer it.
Second.
Motion by Potabom, second by Taylor, to defer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Thanks, Glenn. Pass is five to zero. County library, rural basic.
This here, we make an allocation against the townships. I did show on page one, let's say it's shown here, but it's page one shows you the organization. Page two is the one I wanted to go to. Shows how we break this down. The county library is paid on a per capita basis. We have approximately six towns left in the county library plus the townships. Town can vote to get out of the library or can vote to be added in. They have no changes, I know, right now, so they have set their budget. They send to us, the county, the board of supervisors, what the allocation is for the townships. In this case here, I believe it went down, I thought here. On page. I can tell you, our allocation is two hundred and seven thousand. I apologize, a hundred and forty-one thousand nine seventy-three. And our total budget is on page three, and then we break it down in our budget cycle. But the current year, we're paying a hundred and forty-three thousand two fifty-nine. We are going down to a hundred and forty-one thousand nine seventy-three. So there's actually a reduction, but here at the township's pay. Which would be saying prorated to all six towns.
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Pass is five to zero. County treasurer.
Gentlemen. Uh, motor vehicle bu, budget was reduced by thirty-one seventy this year, so. Recommend it.
It's pages two to three.
Can't until we get to it, Mike.
What's that?
Can't until we get to it in our book.
Page five to six.
Okay.
I just had to find the section.
That's page five to six.
His operation costs went down, but, um, the benefits and wages went up, so he actually had an overall increase, but on operations, he went down.
Natural and LP gas, Mike, is that for the Little Anthony Courthouse?
Yep.
Okay. And do we get billed for that every?
Whenever they fill the tank, you know.
Yep.
Which so far this year, I haven't had to even have one filled.
Back on wood.
Yeah, no kidding.
Were you looking at, uh, at one point, kind of shifting offices in your building?
Shifting offices in?
Like moving yours?
You're going to make a new break room at one point.
Yeah, I think we're going to back off from that.
Okay.
It would be nice, but, I mean, what would be, would be nice is to have a sink in the break room. And the reason, the main reason for shifting that was so that we could tap into the wall where the rest of yous are, get water and, and drain. The only issue with that is, is it puts the people on break out closer to everybody else, and sometimes they get a little boisterous. So we decided against that. Unless Kenny can find a way to get water and, and drain in the current location.
About that area upstairs, outside of juvenile detention, was that?
Fourth floor.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, some people use that, but the problem with that is, is if you get fifteen-minute break, by the time you get up there and then you get back, you know, your break is cut considerably, so.
I'll move to, in a second.
Motion by Potabom, second by Reddick, to receive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, pass is five to zero.
Uh, tax department budget reduced by twenty-three fifty.
That's page nine to ten. Again, his operation went down, but he doesn't have any control on the wages or, I don't know. that went up. So his operation did go down.
Trying to help out, you know, what can I say? Just that, I'm just that kind of guy.
You are a good man.
But remember, when the coffee machine dies, I'll be back to see ya. Or I could just budget for it every year and wait for it to die, you know?
Mike, on official publication and legals, is that...
On which ones?
It's four thousand five, official publication and legals.
Yep.
Does that kind of vary, where you need the five thousand?
Not really.
Could you go down to four, or...
About three thousand of that is for, just for the tax sale itself.
Okay.
And then I've got an annual and a semi-annual that I have to publish in all three papers.
Okay.
So that eats up the rest of it, pretty much, so.
You think five thousand's what you need there?
Pretty close, yeah.
Okay.
It goes up, it's been going up every year, the publications. The tax sale, in the last three years, have gone for like a buck sixty on a parcel, up to over two, about two-ten a parcel now, so.
I'll move to receive it. Second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Patabaum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
I remember next year, it'd be here at three-thirty.
Am I very early here?
Item F, civil service.
Separate tab on that, and it's only one page, and actually, we budget one-half of one percent of the civil service deputies, so that's pretty much locked-in number, whether they spend it or not. If they don't spend it, it goes in reserves. It's not a whole lot of money, we're talking six thousand dollars. Some years, they may spend it all, some years they may not. Obviously, they haven't spent a whole lot. Spent four thousand eight hundred two years ago, fifty-two hundred dollars a year ago, and currently, they're up to three thousand. Half a year through, so. And basic contract wages are with Lisa Wilson, she's a civil service director.
So could we, what is that based on, the variance, essentially?
The half of one percent? That's by COVID. We have to budget one-half of one percent of the civil service, total wages for civil service deputies.
But as far as office supplies and publication and legals, we have no effect?
We just spread out, so we put it in there. We have to budget eleven thousand eight twenty-one, we could basically put it in there, I guess.
Okay.
So if they don't spend it, it goes back in our reserves.
So there's nothing we can do with this, except to receive it?
Right.
So then I'd move to do so.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Emergency management, how's the hand?
Oh, it's still attached. That's a good sign.
Managing that emergency, I see.
Yeah. My, my three-year-old helped too, the day I did it, so. So we're kind of, I'm, emergency management is about the same as Starcom, although we have had the commission meeting to approve the FY twenty budget. The formal adoption hearing will be, is scheduled for January tenth, and that has already been sent out for publication. So it'll be formalized, shouldn't be any hiccups with the actual adoption. A couple things that went up are, there's a large-scale exercise in September of 2019.
Is this anywhere, Dennis?
Twenty-eight under supervisors.
Supervisors. That's where you're hiding it. We're all looking under emergency services.
No, this is allocated, another one is allocated by the board, and other commission sets basically.
So you have to excuse us all for, with our books, we couldn't find you.
And her, her, the number we have in there, I feel confident that's what we're handing up.
It was approved, just not, yep. So the large-scale, it'll be a multi-day exercise with the State of Iowa Air and Army National Guards down at CF Industries. And so we budgeted for that, as well as the current rewrite of the County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is contracted through Simco. In order to, we budgeted for it this year, it won't be finalized, so it'll go to reserves, then moved over, but for actual printing and distribution to all the jurisdictions. As well as then slowly not relying on the federal grant, because there's talks every year, every year, on the Emergency Management Performance Grant that passes through the state. So we're slowly reducing that, just to not rely on it, so if that funding is not available.
Do you have any idea on the date for the exercise, or is that to be determined?
I have the dates, but not with me.
Okay.
I can email them.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
I'll move to receive it.
Motion by Reddick, second by DeWitt. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Melissa Thomas with Human Resources. Our actual benefit cost did go up, but our operating budget has gone down about fifty-three
I'd move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Thank you very much.
That concludes today, budget hearings. I will send out a new schedule, because we deferred a couple to the fifteenth. Secondary roads can't make it, he had to defer him to the fifteenth. But we have enough time on the fifteenth, we can handle it. So I'll send out a whole new schedule here.
Can you do a motion to defer on soil conservation?
So move.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt, to defer on soil conservation.
We'll move them to the fifteenth. We'll file when they show up.
There you go, that'd be better.
Have to go those side.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I just want to make one quick comment, if I can, on the social services budget. The budget that Rolling Hills, and I know, we can talk about this later in the meeting, but they're looking at a total for Woodbury County of three million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven. And I can give Dennis these numbers. However, minus the anticipated allocation from Sioux Rivers, that's Woodbury County money, I estimate, or will estimate, that it'll be three million, twenty-nine thousand, six eighty-seven. So the FY twenty appropriations will actually go down, based on what we actually need to levy. So there's about a ninety-three thousand dollar reduction from what we'll need to contribute, even though our budget will be higher, so we can work those numbers. But if we revise that into this, that might be helpful as we look at a target.
And, and we made stable at the beginning, too, it's not fluctuate, depends on what we get from the rolling hill here from Sioux Rivers. This is, this is probably the minimum that Jeremy has.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get more, but then we can readjust our tax levy and asking as late as June first, or so. Coiled better, I know.
I, you did that for the assistance, for general relief. We didn't really need that motion, but the, is there something that you know of that lays out the funeral cost? Is there something that needs to be changed, to be brought to the board?
I deferred the funeral, didn't we?
No.
No, no.
Changed.
We moved from five thousand utilities to five...
Right. Isn't, so it doesn't affect the overall budget.
It was a wash.
Saying is that, is there something in writing somewhere that says how much you can spend per funeral? Because if that's what it is, that should come back to the board.
There's a thirty percent increase, twelve eighty-five, as Pope said.
Right.
But she administrates it, doesn't she let the funeral homes know what the payment will be?
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is whether it's policy or somewhere in writing that we need to clarify.
It's through the county attorney's office. There's a page that needs to be amended, and I've got an email from Mr. Whitman on what needs to be changed.
Okay, so that is gonna be taken care of. That's all I was concerned about. Okay, thanks.
It's just a number up in the sky somewhere.
We are in recess until the swearing-in of the...
I would like to say...
I'm gonna text you.
Yeah.
You do a good job of asking questions.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
A thousand or two, if it gets where we're meeting.
And I was thinking, this even...
What do you need? How much money do you need?
All they talked about was the lease purchase.
Oh, okay. Sure. Appreciate it, yeah. A good Christmas, New Year's, and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Who is? Land's in front of him.
Good, good. Yeah, yeah, stayed, stayed home and had some relatives home from Chicago, my brother lives out that way, and so it was nice to be all together.
We have plans to see you soon, so. I never come to anything on Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Watching the broadcast, this is gonna be good. Catching together.
Yeah, great, great. All right, good to see you. Hey, how's it going? Good, good. Have a good Christmas? Have a good Christmas to you? Wow, very good. Yeah, very nice. Well deserved. Yeah, absolutely.
He got a, he got a, oh, dehydrator, and a spring off start for his car.
Okay, he didn't want a ring.
Yeah.
Good deal. Something the family makes, it gets kids out of...
Yeah. That's my year, she's...
Old, is she gonna be?
Yeah, you're just too scared to even know when.
Yeah. I might ask to be last. Yeah. It's like getting ready for church.
I'm gonna, I saw, I saw a case where, yeah, twenty sixteen, January one, I got some money, so I'm gonna hold to traditional... I'm gonna put, now, I can't do this, so I was gonna say, pending on the Iowa terms, because you never know how the Iowa game is gonna turn out. I watched nineteen ninety. You watched it? Were you at the docks? I saw it. Docks, or what was it? Docks.
So for this, today, is this the full of this has...
I'm gonna be on the street. Wow, was it, I remember it was a fact. Yeah, I thought he had a couple of... He is a strictly a college student. Because my daughter gets off forty-nine, they target, and then about ten times, I said, where are you going? Going out. Yeah, nobody goes out till nine o'clock. And I asked her, where are we going? I went there, well, Chris, you went there in the... No, well, I was there for the roof game, Chris. We went in there, I was on the, with the miracle ranch, and we were, then we parked right next to it, you know, that I ain't gonna meet forever, and we said, well, look here. So we all went into, about...
When I heard we had a manager, we had, we had two of us from my high school class, and we, one call off, and we, I think, I think, that their tax... One was there. That's why I heard, because she was... Yeah, I heard, I looked, I should've guessed, it looks just way over there.
So, yeah, I don't know, that's what I spoke.